Motion to open. Make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
Second.
To open the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Carl?
I make a motion, we approve the following warrant. Uh, warrant eighty-three in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Warrant eighty-four in the amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and six cents. Warrant eighty-five in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Warrant eighty-six in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Warrant eighty-seven in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Warrant eighty-eight in the amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and nineteen cents. Warrant eighty-nine in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Warrant ninety in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Warrant ninety-one in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Warrant ninety-two in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant ninety-three in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred sixty dollars and forty-one cents. Warrant ninety-four in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant ninety-five in the amount of eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents. And warrant ninety-six in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
A second, this is Counselor Emery.
Moved in second to approve the fourteen warrants as presented, all in favor? That is a vote. Approval of our minutes of our regular council meeting, March tenth of two thousand and twenty, they are in your packet. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from March tenth is written, second? So moved in second to approve our minutes of our March tenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, all in favor? Vote. All right, department head report. Fuel usage is in there. And transfer stations, your first one, does anyone have any questions for Jamie? None, we'll move on to public work. Again, any questions for Jamie? We've got yours. Bring cleanup coming soon, Jamie?
Yes.
All right, moving on to power summation, Mike, how's things going?
Good.
We get a lot of use here. Anybody have any questions for Mike? None?
Sorry to interrupt, but where he's so far away, he's not coming in so good, you might need to repeat or just say it, sorry about that.
All right.
Sorry about that.
And, uh, so yeah, like had him do that for this year rather than next year.
Yep. The rims that were on there, up the fourth avenue there.
All right, we're moving on to our next one, wastewater operations. Everything in, nothing going on down there, looking good down there. All right, so I didn't see the department head report from John McPhee or Bob. So if you have any questions regarding the police, fire, or libraries, just get in touch with Chris and he can fill you in on that. All right, moving on to old business, we have none to take up at this time. All right, under new business, we have a municipal gift card proposal and, uh, Chris, you can give us the long and short of this.
Uh, town of Madawaska had a program that they came up with that basically had the town, uh, fund part of a gift, uh, card purchase. Essentially what it would be is you buy a fifty-dollar gift card, the town would fund, uh, twenty-five dollars of that and the person buying the gift card would fund the other twenty-five and be used with local merchants. Now, we have money available in economic development where we can do that. The question then then becomes, okay, what are legitimate businesses in Baileyville to utilize that with? If you're looking strictly at those that are necessary for what's going on, I think you'd have to limit it to food town. You could go Dollar General, but the problem with Dollar General is they're an actual company, whereas food town is fairly local. Uh, then you get into things like Shuckins, windows, and the Irving Station. The question is, if you did in fact do something like that, would you include them or just stick to a food town? Because they're providing, you know, essential supplies, so to speak. I don't know. But it it would require the town probably forking over, uh, ten thousand dollars out of reserve to help, um, do this and that would encourage people to spend locally, would have to be spent in the town Baileyville. Yeah, hair salon is is looking like it can open up on May first. Right, but I mean, a program like this, I would see being beneficial to, um, you can grow your hair longer. You can not grow, still get by.
Right. Right, it's gonna be tough to, uh, you know, determine where the money needs to be spent.
Well, that's why.
Without people getting up in arms.
Right.
Those who's getting it.
On business, if we're the ones that put out this program and here's the rules.
Right.
Governor Mills telling us what we've got to do, this is the Baileyville Town Council and the town manager that's designed this program based off a Madawaska boost program, so it's not an official guideline and we have to follow them as long as we adopt the program that would work for them. I think giving people money to go to restaurants and to salons is necessarily benefiting the actual concept of what is what we're trying to accomplish here. I personally think that if you were going to do it, I would support utilizing the food liner. Everyone has to still get, um, you know, whether it's toilet paper or water or milk, things of that nature. I would support spending money like that, but I surely wouldn't sponsor us giving people fifty dollars to go.
Do something frivolous, yeah.
Or a two-ounce windows for a picture of beer.
Right. Of course, we don't want people going up to the, you know, the food mart and buying, you know.
Well, again, we.
Tobacco and liquor with it either.
That the gift card is not responsible for that.
So I, my, my question is, so I mean, the way that we're discussing it right now is less of a stimulus program and more of an assistance program, I mean, a stimulus program to me is you've got those small businesses, the hair salons and stuff that have been without money, so this is a way to ensure that, you know, yeah, I might get a gift card for a hair salon, can't use it right off, but it's still putting some money into our local businesses' pockets, so I guess we we need to decide if we want stimulus type program or just because I'm gonna go to the food mart either way, I've gotta get hamburger either way, they're gonna survive, the food mart's gonna be okay, people have to get food. Necessarily not hamburger, it's just me. But I think, you know, some of our small businesses that are, you know, hurting a little bit more from this that are truly non-operational at this point.
If you're gonna open it wider than that, then you've got to include all businesses, including Dollar General.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, it's really gonna be very difficult to, um, define the parameters of that without, you know, somebody getting left out or stepped on or, you know, feeling slated. Tough, something that we can put some thought into though.
Well, and I, I mean, the Madawaska one, in order to be considered eligible business, be a business that approves our of having our generic gift certificate, so this is something the towns given that I, probably you're gonna find in Dollar General and places like that that are nationally owned brands are gonna go, why not just gonna take some gift certificate from Baileyville?
The town, yeah, good point.
Cause if we, if whatever gets approved or this, if if something gets approved, then we'll be able to either track down each of the the businesses and say, okay, would you take the gift certificate from the town?
Yeah, because it says you have to participate in this program. So you're, in order to get anyone, you're gonna have to contact each business to say, do you want to participate in this program, here's how you're gonna get paid.
I mean, uh, it's tough because ultimately if if we're putting out ten thousand dollars, like you said, Chris, um, spread over however many businesses, isn't really gonna go that far.
But it's also ten thousand from the person who buys the gift certificate too. So that would be twenty thousand dollars spent locally. But that's roughly, ten thousand will be four hundred different.
I mean, the cost basically comes down to the town initiates the money and then sells these gift certificates to whoever who then in turn hits them up.
Okay.
Who they're sold to. It's a two-part program really, you, the town allows money and if we only sold five thousand dollars, that'd be ten thousand dollars, don't look, we sold that, it'd be twenty.
Right. And they're on a, a first come, first served basis, so, I mean, basically until the money runs out, right? Or, I mean, how's that gonna? We just gonna have people flocking to the town office to pick up gift cards and?
Well, so the, so the boost program that's kind of, I guess what we use as a thing, there's a limit of four per household that says, obviously, we could change that, we could say two per household, we'd say whatever we want, so I mean, someone can't just come in and get ten for just their household. So I mean, a limit of sixty gift certificates per business, you know, so. And I mean, we could even have an application process that we put out to the businesses and say, hey, if you wanna do this, like, apply by this day and if they didn't apply then.
Right.
The thing too is I suspect we're gonna have the impact that it's cut down for quite some time, so even if these get redeemed in like September, October, I think people are still gonna be needing it.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that.
We look over for our next meeting so we can come up with better idea once we read through this and get our heads wrapped around it. I think it's, I think it's a good program, but, uh.
So you, you think in concept, it's worth moving forward with, have us look at this, including Chris possibly coming up with some program that kinda tailors what we've kinda hit around here tonight?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
To read through this and cause, uh, we're coming up with a whole bunch of ideas from what this plan is obvious.
Yeah. I mean, I'd, I'd like to, to see like a lot of, like the gift cards, um, perhaps go to people that don't have the means of, um, traveling outside of town as readily as a lot of people too. I mean, I don't know. I, I, I picture a lot of our older population, you know, that, you know, maybe they rely on transportation from other people.
Right, but their gift certificates will only be for Baileyville businesses.
Right, right, that's what I mean, is for, you know, our, maybe some of our older folks who shop in town on a regular basis because they, they have, um, limited transportation.
Have a preference to.
Right. Yeah.
I, I, I don't, I, I think, do it, it's, it's to stimulate our small businesses and help them out, I think it's, I don't care if a fifteen-year-old comes in and wants a gift card for windows and they're gonna fork over twenty-five bucks and we spend the extra twenty-five, to me it, you know, if, if we're, it, we need to decide stimulus package or an assistance package.
Right.
So between now and the next meeting, you'll have a chance to look over, send the questions through via email to Chris, contact and he will in turn put together on some of the points that everyone's kinda hit on regarding this in concept. The warrants moving forward, just a matter of how we get to that point.
Okay.
Agreement to that, Steve?
Agreed.
All right, now, moving on to the next one, the town meeting warrant, is this gonna be tabled?
I think we're gonna table that, but just be aware that I'm, we're looking at putting a question on the town, uh, on the warrants for the town meeting that would probably be best done as a secret ballot question, so we would, I would have the three, I would have those pre-printed just in case. It could be that the people vote not to have a secret ballot and we'd be open.
Such that, but that's all done on the floor.
That would be done on the floor.
That's right. Now, I just wanna make this perfectly clear that I am supporting only one point five million dollars to go before the voters.
Okay.
Everyone on the same page with this?
Up to.
Mm-hmm.
Two.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Right?
Yes, yes.
Steve, are you on board with that?
Yep.
And we've all, let's not forget, we sat in this room with the school board and we all agreed on this.
Yes.
And the legality side of it, we have to do it this way.
Right.
All right, so you break table in that for the next week, but we may have to have a special meeting, you know, we may.
Get that signed and get it out.
Like for Chris of the time.
Yeah, that is in the minutes from the last meeting where it was proved that worrying.
Right.
Okay.
You'll be in touch with us.
Yep.
All right, now, Chris, you're gonna give us a Main Street project update on ownership.
Right, uh, on, on the, uh, the ownership, they, uh, the state will not give up ownership of Main Street. However, they will give us everything we want on Main Street. We, we would have free rein to do what we wish to do with an agreement with, through the state. That agreement would be ongoing. The other thing is, um, Ann-Lise has put the project to, uh, another company to get another bid and she's expecting that fairly soon, but it would be end of summer or even possibly next spring before this company would, uh, look at doing it, but hopefully it will be much more competitive than the two prices we've seen from, um, Northeast. The one was just bizarre, and the other, and the other one cut a million off that, but still was way a lot. So we're looking at that, it's, we're still still hoping that we'll see a better price. And I suspect with the market, the way things have gone with this, we're probably better off because of that. I think people are gonna be looking for work pretty hard too. I think that worked, this has worked out in our benefit on that, um, on that, um, that. So that's where we are with that project.
All right, so you'll keep us about right on that. All right. Moving on to the Main Street, or moving on from the Main Street, did the budget proposal for twenty twenty-one, Chris has put together, um, books. You've got yours, this is mine, that must be yours.
I took mine.
That's Steve's. Okay, have you gotten your book?
Yeah, I've got mine.
Um, all in all, I think, um, Chris, from what you've kind of put out there, has done a fairly decent job as far as the cuts, um, some big ones obviously that are, um, hit hardest, but there's usually the ones that, the ones that stick out like a sore thumb, usually the ones that hit the hardest. I think we probably should again take these, address them and then have a budget meeting. I guess the question I've got, oh, two questions, is there anything that we need to go from here, Chris?
Um, I, I think the big thing is I proposed, proposed number.
Last night.
Right. So what I'm looking at is schools going up three hundred and twelve thousand. We're going down about ten thousand. We've got a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand in, in other revenues that have come in, but, um, I'm still looking at place a little and, and, uh, Marilyn just showed me a place where we can save another, you know, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, so we can, you know, we're still gonna whittle down on what is, uh, gonna be used next year. My fear is that we've cut, so we're looking at keeping the increase in taxes to one mill or less. Right, as opposed to the two-mill increases we've seen the previous two years. My fear is the school is saying, oh, look, they're only going up one mill and my understanding is they made a proposal last night to add three hundred thousand dollars in spending.
Wow.
Their budget.
Wow, that helps there regarding the one point five.
Wow.
Um, now, again, that's not to say it's above and beyond the one point five. I don't know the whole conversation, but regardless, we set together parameters to get to this point, I think we need to stick to them. I'm in agreement with Chris. I don't think the school's coming in at three hundred and twelve thousand, I think it's gonna be less. It's all set and done.
Right, right.
I don't know how much more, it might only be ten thousand dollars. Again, it's only a number that's thrown out there and while at least almost two months away from, uh, going to.
My, my concern though is that the school is gonna think, oh, well, if town cut back on there, if we can increase R and D and forth. My, my, and again, I'm not, I'm not council, but my first inclination would be, oh, hell no. And, uh, and then put, uh, you know, as we put on the warrant articles, you know, the school board recommends, we'll say, it'll be there, but the next line can read, town council does not recommend.
Which we've done in the past.
Right.
I mean, I think the key to this is you're going to need to be in close contact with superintendent over the next course of the two months before this number does go the other way that we don't want it to go. Um, they've done some good cuts on their side and we've done some cuts on our side that we all are hurting in one form or another, so, um, we can hold that for another year. Again, I'll say, and I said it last year, we're kicking the can down the road because the taxes are gonna go up. We've spent a lot of money, valuation's going down. Big taxpayer, and that is going to affect our mill rate.
No fans, which we're, uh, we're gonna be losing.
Even if they were to say tomorrow, we're gonna do this, this and this. With three years, oh. That's a long three years. Other question I had, again, we'll spend some time with this. What can we do as far as enough time for you guys to, um, thumb through this and then get together for a budget meeting?
Next week?
Hey, we got next week, I'm fine with that.
Week from tonight.
Nah, next week could work.
Okay, so next week, are you one, can we do it on Tuesday? And are we gonna do, I know time-wise, we're probably gonna have to do this hell-bad differently than we did in years past. We used to be able to do department, 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 I don't think. Time-wise, I don't think we have enough time and two, I guess doesn't make sense regarding restrictions.
If you guys look through your budgets and have your questions, then we can go pretty quick.
So can everyone do Tuesday, five-thirty?
Sounds good.
Okay, so moving on with that, we have a tentative town meeting date of June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Um, obviously, there may be some restrictions that, uh, we're still working out details regarding that, but we couldn't get a motion to at least put forth what we wanna do.
Moved at the Baileyville Town Council, scheduled the date of the annual town meeting for June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, subject to main pandemic restrictions.
A second to that. So moved in second to a proposed annual town meeting of June twenty-third, twenty twenty, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to Chris's report.
Okay, uh, coronavirus, Governor had a, uh, had a press conference today, he set up the, uh, four phases to move back into supposedly coming back into normality. And starting on that first, uh, they want people to wear face masks in public settings for physical distancing, it is difficult to maintain. It expands businesses that can reopen as well as activities that can participate in. Businesses can reopen under stage one. Include, but not limited to barber shops, hair salons, head grooming, drive-in movie theaters, airships and car washes. Uh, also include, uh, restricted use of golf courses and disc golf courses. Guided outdoor activities, state-owned private, public land trails and historic sites. Coastal state parks will remain closed. Gatherings of ten or more people are, remain prohibited in stage one. He's looking at stage two, starting June first. Allow restaurants to reopen in limited capacity. Fitness and exercise centers and nail technicians. And coastal state parks also reopening. Lodging, campgrounds and summer camps will also be allowed to open for main residents and those from out of state who have met the fourteen-day quarantine requirement, that's gonna be a ticker. Gatherings will be expected to be expanded to a limit of fifty people on stage two. And then, starting July first, lift the fourteen-day quarantine requirement for people out of state. Uh, bars and personal services such as spas, tattoo, uh, piercing parlays, massage facilities allowed to open. And stage four, lift most restrictions that require people to live under personal safety precautions and that can be adjusted depending on what they started seeing, um, within things going, within the state. Um, that is, that is a lot, uh, more open than I expected to be. But that is, that is, it's the, um, I, in that respect, it would almost be my interpretation would be people come out through that barrier of to do that. So in that respect, things are changing, we're still, uh, maintaining, you know, the doors being locked, we have the drop box, that, that worked out better than I expected. People are pretty good about people. But, and it's something that now I think I have to check every day, once it's over, that people are not home. That's fine. Um, I think overall, we're doing okay. I expect so, that, uh, a lot of people. Uh, the task list, I'm not gonna go through, but the website, uh, excuse God that just about ready to go and call phone quickly today, but, um, God has to get the tax, uh, commitment on there, that's one thing that I noticed was there, and then make sure we got the forms on there for homestead. And we wanna make it user-friendly and want everything possible that's on there. Uh, we do have one, the Facebook page, have, um, they, they don't get any, that's, that's. When Carl said that, what she did give us is often out of, uh, Baileyville.org.
Well, what do we have to do differently as well in front of Black?
what do we have to do differently, while, and threaten like, I say, you do. Um, just some, you know, that, that's basically where we're going right now. I think the real clumps, we, that is extremely popular with the, the locals. Um, we made, well, it, it's gone over very well, you know, all those elderly folks getting, you know, meals every day. That has worked out very nicely. Um, the people, for the most part, have been very cooperative with what's going on with this, uh, coronavirus thing. But I think they're getting it, that's, yeah, they're expecting it, back to back to back to this. Um, unless the council has any real problem, um, with the first being Friday, I would propose that on the third, fourth rather, that we open for foot traffic, fourth of May. Unless there's any real heartburn about it. I think, you know, Marilyn can keep her doors shut, and we can still have that, have them go up to the, you know, that gives us that extra weekend too.
The only thing I would say with that is that pretty small hallway there, you get two or three people in at a time, and the social distancing becomes an issue, so.
Understand about social distancing.
Can you put, can you put the, uh,
Tape odor, yeah.
caution line, like, you do it, you know, feel like you're watching them, they're letting comments down, you know, it's a mean like.
You'd almost have to have only one person come in at a time, because if, if I gotta walk by Tim to get behind him six feet, I'm two feet away from him when I walk by.
They, they open the door and they put their head in, if they're somewhere at the counter, then they just step outside, so.
What they have, like, the post office has one person.
Right, one person in at a time, right.
You could have something like that, two people.
I'd say just one person at a time, if the weather's bad, they can.
So many people can call ahead and.
It's, it, for the most part, I think people have been pretty, um, they've been pretty, they've been well. Um, broadband, they released the phase five addresses. Of those are, are ready to go for installation. Now, the problem is, they're not doing inside installations, right?
A question, when are they gonna do that?
I'm, I'm hoping that with phase one coming in, that they might start doing that.
Based on what she has listed there, did they fall into any of the?
There's nothing blatant out there, but I would say that it's because it's limited contact and you're not putting hands on people, I think they could with, they first, they could do that.
My understanding was Pioneer set these guidelines.
Pioneer supposedly looking at what was going on, went with that.
Based on the safety.
Based on that, I was, I would suspect that they could do phase one, spectrum never stops.
Could you make a phone call to find out, because I really would like to hook my cable up?
Um, yeah, but everything up to phase five is, is ready. Phase six is being pushed, is being put out right now, so Bearco Road and all that, Staples Road, I don't think it's going down very fast.
Evergreen.
Yeah, well, yeah, you should be part of phase five.
No, I'm part of phase six.
Because of the construction, right?
I don't know, nothing about it makes sense. Everyone around me is hooked up.
For, for us, phase seven will be starting, square point. So as soon as they got everything on in phase six, they're gonna come and probably ask for one last confirmation before they hit the square point. Um, it appears that we may have, uh, a little excess money left over, and that would not be a bad thing. But I will give him a call and find out when he intends on doing in homes. And to, uh, because, I mean, it's, there's, he had a stack of Baileyville addresses waiting to go a month and a half ago. I'm assuming it's not bigger.
He said, mine's just running the cable in the house, I can do that.
Right.
I can even hook it up to the box that I have to. It's lit.
Yeah, you're, you're, all you're waiting is that last step. And I think you guys do that as well. That's, that's what's going on with, um, broadband right now. Phase five, uh, it's gotta get.
That's it for you, alright? We'll go to public comments, Marilyn?
Um, mowing contracts, they usually start mowing in May, and, um, I've had people ask me more times if it's going up today.
I actually have that on my list.
Okay.
And I'm gonna address this, uh, the way I feel it should be. I think, based on past practice, contracts have been awarded based on, we've accepted a contract, and if they haven't increased, we give it, roll it onto the, uh, garbage, mowing, cemetery, Jamie, you've been, you've been a test for this. Um, I think if we're gonna change this, I think this is the year that we do it, but we do it in the fall. And we put these all out to bid in the fall, so that we know the upcoming year, what it's gonna cost us for mowing. The contract that, that's going on right now, um, the person's already won, purchased the insurance. And it's based on, on our past practices, what he's been told by past town managers, what he's been told by past counselors. You know, that's our practice, we always, if we've got, if there's nothing wrong with it, we don't fix it. And I don't think, I can, I can say for myself, I've never had a complaint regarding who's mowing now. I will say, some of the ones that have approached me regarding, uh, mowing warrants looking at in the coming years. You know, I, I, I don't think it's fair for us to go back on our word based on what we've instructed our past town managers to do and town managers to do, I do believe that maybe it's time when we looked at things and said, okay, when the garbage comes out, let's again, put it out to bid and see where the prices come in. I've been on here long enough that that's burned us before, and very well could this time. So, as far as I'm concerned, on the mowing side of it for this year, if we're gonna change this, I don't think it's this year, it's moving forward and change our practices all the way around.
And I completely agree with that, it's just if there was an issue with the mowing line here because of the insurance and the way I had to make the turn table, if you wanted to do it the other way, then.
Yeah, that's right.
Go up to bid.
It's what's gonna happen.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna happen if we won't do it the other way.
Because we got burned on that, on our audit.
Right, it's one of our things, if he can't change that, there's nothing we can do. That's the auditors telling us what we have to do. Is everyone in agreement on that?
Um, I just wanna, sorry, uh, remember, remind Keisha how she would unmute, there was some noise on her phone, and it's star six if she wants to chime in.
I'm good with that, Tim.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yep.
Again, last week. You know, he, he needs to, regardless of what contract it is, the bids are filled out the way they have to be, and if the auditor wants it done this way, and it has to be done, then that's. If it has, if it has to go that way, it has to go. May first.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think we'll be fine as far as this year, and I think he'll, we'll change it, to be honest with you. You know, that is what it is, but if we are going to change our practices, let's do this, put it on the action list, and let's not wait any longer than August, so that we can get with Jamie to say, okay, it's time to go and get some people that can bid on upcoming, you know, a year out, mowing. I, I, and I know, I don't wanna get to next spring and be putting it out for bid. Well, no, I'm not saying garbage, I don't think garbage is, I've turned out there two years, isn't that?
Uh, I'd have to check on that, because the garbage one, because those are some of our bigger contracts. So, mowing and cemetery?
If we, if we are going to change the way we do business, you know, and we've been, I've been on here now for fifteen, sixteen, going on, maybe seventeen years, and as far as I can remember, when we approved the contract, if the contract comeback said, I'm not increasing my price, we just awarded it. It's when the contractor said, no, I need to increase my contract, then it went out for proposal.
I think we're still in nineteen ninety wages for all the trash down, I'd hate them. I'm glad, we, we've saved more money than I can even imagine over the last twenty-five years, I, the trash. I know we just, um, our conversation with the cemetery guy, we just extended that for years. Just, uh, once ago, they can come back and still go.
Well, no one wants to lose, you know, right now, and it's, it's so hard to lose that money. You know, you've got more and more people that are trying to do it on their own, and, you know, taking away that, so, I get it.
We, we, we have had a lot of, uh, walls we've hit over the last twenty years, but we've had some really good luck with some of our contracts over the last.
Absolutely.
We've saved a ton of money with mowing and garbage, things like that.
It's all.
Yes, we're waiting behind there, great.
Yeah, we've not had any complaints with, with the mowing at all, they've all been great, I just have to fill it out then, if I'm gonna have to fill it out the right.
Yeah, and I'm in agree, I mean, look, we have to follow what the contract says, and two, if that's what the auditor moved, then that's what we have to do.
Yeah, it doesn't pay, pay it to one person, but insurance, another person, both have to pay.
Well, I, I mean, I guess, with that being said, I mean, if it's whatever, ABC Mowing, and we're paying it to Joe Blow, he's the owner of ABC Mowing, that, that's, right, I'm saying that, if that's not the case, then we need to. Alright, so Marilyn, anything else? Jamie? Nothing? Mike?
Okay.
All set? Alright, well, we'll move on to council closing comments, and we'll start, you wanna start with the screen?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Steve?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, no?
Nothing.
Alright, Craig?
Nothing.
Earl?
Awesome.
Alright, I've got a couple of things. One, just to give everyone a heads up, uh, Chris has been out on the property maintenance. On, I talked with him a little bit in detail today, um, on a couple of properties that he's gonna draft the letter immediately on. And I think we're at a point with some of these, the time we really took town action, to just fix them and build them. Whatever we've gotta do, because they've been on there year after year, year after year. I believe Chris told me, we had twenty-seven on there, and of the twenty-seven, we're down to fourteen major offenders. And other ones that have made, um, significant improvements. Um, so we have made some headway, but we haven't got to where we wanna be, but there's just a couple that we, we have to take the action and just be done with. They're not going to change.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's no reason why, as long as they're making an attempt.
Right.
It's the ones that just haven't made the cut. And we're early enough into this, and I think if Chris gets the letters going immediately, maybe we get action by our next meeting in May, and if not, on June first, just let the gamut roll.
Our follow-through is terrible.
Well, it's just.
That's what does us in, is that second time, when we don't follow through.
Exactly right.
We start all over the next year, and they just go trash.
Yeah.
That's right, that's exactly. Alright, the next thing, registrations online, and this has kinda brought up a prime period in, in our lives where these amenities would have worked out well for us. And we don't have that available to us. Why?
Supposedly, we need the first one to go through, supposedly.
Okay, I've got one.
Good, then you wanna come down and we'll, you know, let's walk through it and we'll get going.
I, I mean, I get, if that's all we need to do, because, you know, if we can at least have this, and then it's available on our website. It's the same with paying the taxes and paying the sewer bill, like, the water bill, um, I just can't do the water bill, but we're faced with times that I don't think in the near future are gonna be changing anytime soon. So we've got every available option for the people to be able to pay what's, they need to pay up.
So you wanna come down Thursday and we'll.
Yeah.
Knock her out?
Yeah, I do, because it's gotta be done.
But once we get on there, then they can do that, and with the new website, they should be.
Interlinked.
Website, and if you go on the link there, do it. And the, the beauty of the state does send the money straight.
Yeah, I mean, and for the amount of money that we get out of the registration fees, it really, let's say, come out to Marilyn a year.
That's the X one, we're talking about the Asian fee.
The Asian fee.
Five dollars now.
Right, it's five dollars, but I mean, what do we talk to, we've been told, about the six grand, so even if the state said, we're only gonna give you half of it, but we're still getting the revenue coming in, as opposed to, well, I can't pay my bill because of taxes, and they can do it from the comfort of their lazy boards, like I said, to where we are, and here's what it is now.
Come on down Thursday and we'll.
Yep, we're planning on, I usually go to lunch at one, to do it at one. The other question, I mean, I don't, I talked a little bit with duty free, um, they are closed right now. So, we're kind of in a holding cavity here. Uh, I'm just going down to the, the other thing, vacation payroll, where are we on that? Um.
We'll see, we're just gonna put that back through, I've got, uh, people using basic.
I think, I think.
These are one of the big ones.
Well, right, and then, I don't wanna bring up any names, because they really, they're relative to it, but the, the problem is, is the dollar amount. And if we're really looking at next year's budget, there's some serious money potentially that could get paid out in a budget that, right now is the time to do it. If we can get some of those off the book this year, we're gonna be better off than next year having to pay that out, based on where we are in the budget. I mean, you can see that our mill rate's going this way, and I know, I don't know how many weeks these people have, but it's, it's a considerable amount of money when you do out the total for each employee by the week. And when I talk to five or six hundred dollars, we're talking, you know, ten thousand. It's something that we've gotta address, and I know you've been working on it, Chris, but we really have got to nail this down, and you're the one that's at least taken it to another step. At least, I've been with Scott Herriman, I've been with Lynn Bagels, I've been with Chris Johnson, I've been with whoever Luke was. And it's the same thing year after year after year, they get to a point that they don't wanna do anything. I know what you just said with the property meeting, once it gets to the second step, we'll just put it over there and the council will forget about it. We're at a point now where you really can't forget about the base on budget here, the strengths of the, of the, not just this year, but years to come.
And I wouldn't want, wouldn't think anybody would wanna be forced to take the last three or four weeks of their year anniversary, get forced to take a month worth of vacation, use that, because not only are they not really taking it, they're messing up with the people that are stuck working alone for four weeks straight, instead of spreading it out over a year.
There's a lot of potential, uh, ramifications to this, there's no doubt. But, you know, our, you know, when you look at things that are coming up in our budgets over the next couple of years, so that's why it's pretty important that we really look at these this year, is we've got a, a cafeteria project that still is not fully funded. And in addition, they're asking for another one point five million. We've got a sewer project that still hasn't been fully funded. Let alone, we still have to do business in this town. There's still equipment that Mike's gonna need, and Jamie's gonna need, and the police department's gonna need. You know, we can't just shut things down, we gotta continue to operate. So that's why we really have got to look at ways where we have some fat in the budget. I'm not saying there's a lot of fat in there, but, you know, five thousand will end up being ten thousand, ten will be fifteen, and that's how we're gonna end up saving money. Anyways, I've granted enough, I know it's, uh, anyway, that's all I have, so we can consider adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second to adjourn, all in favor? That's a vote, Paul, you wanna start recording?